I'll do a quick icebreaker. Does anybody else have a pet in the room? And if so, can I see them and say hi? Nobody else has a pet in the room? Oh. I've got a sleepy dog who's joining for the video.
All right, six oh five. Should we begin everyone? Cool. So welcome to the USPK town hall. I'm really glad to have everyone on here. We'll probably have a couple of folks that will be joining us throughout the next hour. At any point, if you have any questions, feel free to shoot a message in the conversation or side chat. We'll introduce team, talk about our agenda, and then at the end, we'll open the floor to some conversations and Q and A. Awesome. Yeah, for today's agenda, we'll talk about who here is on the team at USPK, some of the work that we've been doing in 2022, along with some of our strategies for the upcoming year. Some goals and wins that we've done over advocacy, education, and unifying the community along with ways to get involved. So Mal, I'm here in Raleigh, North Carolina. I guess we can do a quick round table for anyone that is on the board, or I think that group is small enough that we could introduce everyone really quick where we're from. I'll speak for Corey really quick. Corey is absent during a quick cover of someone on her team out in Seattle, Washington.
Hey, everyone. I'm Melissa. I'm from Pennsylvania.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Blake from Boston.
Don't think we have Cozy yet, do we?
No.
No, Cozy's out of town in China.
That's right. That's right.
He is nomadic.
Unavailable. Hi, everybody. I'm Mike, formerly of Boston, now of Austin. So pretty much just lost.
I'm Mel. We decided to make it easier. I'm Mel, and Melissa's gonna be Melissa, and I'm in Denver.
Hey, everybody. My name is Garrett. Let's go more. You see him pronouns. I am based in San Juan, Puerto Rico.
We have Charles St. John. Charles is out in Denver, Colorado. And then we have a whole bunch of different people on. I'll kind of just go down the list. Feel free to open your mic and share. Kyle?
Here. School flashback. Sorry.
Kyle, where are you from?
San Diego.
San Diego. Cool. Thanks for joining us today. Adam?
Hey, greetings from Lehigh Valley, Pennsylvania.
Craig?
Greetings, also in Lehigh Valley. Hey, Adam. Good to see you with the gym.
Love the mic setup. John?
Hey, John from out in Denver, Colorado.
iPhone?
Hey, I'm from Portland.
Cool. Then Megan?
I'm from Denver, Colorado also.
All right. Michael, pass it to you. Oh, Nissa. Sorry, I didn't see that one.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Nissa. I'm in Washington DC. Sorry, I'm waiting on some food. It's taking a bit, but yeah.
Thanks for joining us.
On later. Yeah.
Yes, we thought we'd go ahead, Mike. We thought we'd start with some of our big successes from 2022 with a little bit of a look back. I think the biggest one is partnering with Spot Insurance to provide individual members with the first park or anywhere. So worldwide indoor, outdoor insurance, which is pretty unique and actually pretty awesome. So I think that's just like a huge win for us. And well, I think we've got more on that later. The certification committees began evaluation, some parkour certifications to evaluate which ones will be USPK sanctioned, which is pretty exciting. I think we've got three in the pipeline and we're pretty excited about being able to say that we approve of those certifications for coaching. And organizing conversations between female parkour athletes and world chase tag. We've lost the presentation. Do you have it? There we go. There we go. So organizing some conversations with female parkour athletes and world chase tag to facilitate the first women's chase lead, which is really interesting and goes toward one of our main pillars, which is really looking to grow hardcore beyond what people usually think of with eighteen to twenty-five-year-old guys without shirts. So very exciting to be on that growth aspect of it as well. And I think equally exciting on the competition front is establishing the national sport parkour competitive circuit. So uniting six regional competitive leagues and trying to come together and create a national championship. And then spark partnering with Sport Parkour League to assist with the nationals is another big one. So a lot on growth and competition, which we've definitely heard from the members, that those are two key areas and the coaching certs. And the last one, adding more board members to make us even more badass. I think we've covered. We've got really good coverage across a lot of skills and topics with the folks that we have on the board and I think we've, you know, it's shown up in these 2022 successes. So I think there's a lot here to celebrate. So pretty excited about it.
So one of our missions is to advocate. And that goes for furthering the public legitimacy of parkour across the nation with the work that we're doing so that the public is able to learn more about it as well as also trying to convey the awareness of parkour culture, history, and safe practices. So some of our goals that we're working on for this year are connecting communities across states. We've started kind of working on that. We have a small list currently on our website. But we want to be able to have a pretty comprehensive list of communities. So if people want to find out who is near them, we can be a resource to do that. We're working on partnering with insurance organizations for affordable coverage. As Mike mentioned before, we've worked with Spot Insurance and we have some other things in the works that we're hoping to be able to roll out later this year. We've also been working with different organizations and events, trying to kind of support some of those community events beyond just competition, like the Women's National Gathering, Obsidian Gathering, American Rendezvous Summit Gathering, and more. As well as doing a lot of work in the realm of competitions and creating inclusive practices. This is kind of going to be our first competition season, so we're testing out some different policies and hoping to really be able to see how that goes this year as well as standardize some of those practices.
So one of the big things that we're really trying to focus on is getting information out to the wider community. As many of you on this call probably know, the parkour community can be a little bit fragmented, and there's all sorts of different experiences represented. And one of the things that we heard loud and clear from from members, from people we were talking to over the last three to four years of getting set up was the need for access to more resources. One of the big things that we have, we're super lucky in this country to have a number of very reputable parkour certifications created by the parkour community. And so one of the big tasks that we are working on, and while we don't have the final public list of groups yet, it is in the works and we are hoping to release that very soon. But to have some sort of stamp of approval for the existing major parkour certification programs so that people know which ones are good uses of their time and will help to create a more reputable, safe, and trustworthy industry. Another big thing that we've been hearing a lot from people is is the whole question of insurance. And there's a lot of different questions. As was mentioned earlier, we have individual insurance now available through Spot. But one of the big things that everybody is asking about is organizational and gym insurance. And part of that is the fact that right now, everybody is basically finding their own deal and finding an agent that works for them. And that works okay, but that's not going to be sustainable in the long term. And anybody that's had any issues with insurance knows this. So one of our big goals is to collect the industry data, injury data to actually bring it to the insurance companies themselves and advocate for a much wider industry-wide coverage policy. And so that's something we are in the process of working on and it is a lot of work. But we've had a number of our member organizations basically donate information and share information about their policies, about their needs. And we're in the process of trying to advocate for that at the industry-wide level. And the other big thing that we heard from you, the people, was was that we wanted more input on or more access to resources about park design. If any of y'all have traveled abroad and seen the wonderful parks that have popped up around the world and then come back home and been like, oh, why don't we have that here? There are a lot of other people like you, and a number of people want to find better ways to advocate from community levels, from individual levels, from a national level for additional public places to train. And so we've been holding a number of monthly meetings. Right now, Corey and I have hosted one every month the last few months. They're open to all. Come and join us. And we'll post that information both on the website and we'll send out probably an email correspondence afterwards. But we are working to try to try to make as many resources public as possible to share the successes that we've had and make that information accessible.
Yeah, another big goal of ours has been to unify a lot of different organizations, particularly events around the country. We've been doing this with a lot of the work under the guidance of Mel McQueen, who brings a lot of experience from USA Climbing and building out regional competition circuits and bridging that with this this current year with six different regional circuits that will lead up to a nationals. Mel, do you want to give some more insight about our partnership with Sport Parkour League or the recent bit that we had?
Can I lose you there for a second? Um, yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. We're really excited for this season to be hopefully running a full season, not hopefully, to be running a full season with qualifiers running for all three disciplines in the six regions, culminating up to a regional championship in each one that sends on adults to a national competition. This year, we have decided since we want to really have a chance to focus and get things right to just do an adult national circus, but with an eye on possibly adding a youth circuit in the future. And we are really excited to partner with SPL this year with the Sport Parkour League, who everybody probably knows has been running out of Origins and the crew up there, formerly as the North American Parkour Championship, I believe. And you know, the goal of any national governing body is to create a platform or way for athletes to move up and engage at the higher levels and around the country, and then ultimately qualify for international competition. We don't really have a viable international circuit yet, but SPL is kind of the closest we can get to that right now, especially as they're adding in European qualifiers. So having a chance for our athletes to go on and do another thing after our nationals is exciting for us. Plus, they will be bringing in a lot of experience with just the behind-the-scenes running media for an event and setting and judging. And so we're excited to work together and share from our knowledge and build out and make competition even better and across the world, hopefully. Yeah. You said also the nationals? Alan?
Yeah, also, I think just expand on like the international level of spotlighting and creating pathways for athletes. I do think this is something that's very unique to the governing body here in the States and nothing that we're seeing through some of the members of Parkour Earth. So there are a lot of eyes on us. We do. Yeah, we're, I think we're all incredibly excited to see how this this works for this year. With the motivation and drive to make sure that we're doing this in a sustainable way so that others can can model this, whether that's in Europe or Asia.
Yeah. Um, we do. So we've planned for nationals to be the weekend of July 21st through 23rd. We put out a request for proposal, a call to have gyms submit that they would like to host nationals. We've gotten one in so far and we're waiting on probably at least one or two more, and then we'll be going through those and choosing a location that can host a national competition. We will be, at least right now, a gym-based competition. So we're looking specifically for a gym. We're not looking to have to go in and build out a course, but someplace that already has the infrastructure and equipment that can support this type of competition.
Thanks, Mel.
Yeah.
Along with our 2023 goals, as we're looking ahead, we're looking to build out more support for regional and national jams and events, especially with a lot of the experience that many of our team members have here. I think we can really work, whether that's one-on-one or reach out to partnerships like American Rendezvous, Obsidian, the recent Women's Gathering, Texas Winter Jam. Providing support in terms of exposure or leadership. That's what we're trying to do here at USPK. The last that we're really focused on is providing some funding, some grants, or maybe some subsidies for scholarships to ensure that we are building accessibility for parkour, especially when we look at gyms and communities. We want to make sure that this is a growing sport for any others. Melissa?
All right. So obviously, one thing that we're working on as well is membership and building just our ability to reach people. And I believe a lot of us on the call are members, but if you're not, and go over some of our membership options that we have. What's really cool about our membership that began last year, as we mentioned with the spot insurance, is when you purchase an individual membership, you are also getting insurance with that. And the insurance is good for anywhere in the world. We have two kind of levels of that. One is accident coverage up to $10,000. There's $1,000 deductible with that one. That's our practitioner membership. And then our professional membership is $25,000 of accident coverage. And that has a $0 deductible. Again, both of these are good for anywhere in the world. So anytime that you're training, you would be covered for that. We're also working on building our organizational membership and our ability to kind of connect some of the orgs and businesses that are the foundation of the parkour community in the US. And we're working on building out different things that will kind of help the organizations and what we can kind of add to that. For organizations, you can get an event participant insurance via Spot, which would be if you're running an event. We can cover all of the participants at the event. There will also be access to event planning resources. Any events that you have as a member can go into our national calendar that will be on, or I should say, is on our website. And members have the ability to run USPK sanctioned events. We're working on kind of some of the backend of that, being able to support that through our software and kind of help to do that as well as obviously talking about it, getting the word out and any other support as well. So with our memberships, especially individual memberships, that includes voting rights in USPK elections, discounts on some park, excuse me, parkour brands and different events, workshops, and certifications. Our goal with the membership right now is kind of working towards expanding that, getting more people involved. And we would love to see if people, and I know a lot of you guys in the survey have also expressed interest in kind of what's going on behind the scenes. Membership and getting involved with volunteering as well.
Speaking of volunteering, I think here at USPK, it's such a great contribution of time and resources and energy to be able to lift the community. We kind of wanted to share some of the communities that we have currently standing or currently working on. There's basically three different tiers outside of like our executive staff and oversight, a knowledge committee, and then our standing committees. Oversight basically has to do with how our organization is ran. It's a lot of backend boring conversations. Those three include ethics, finance, and governance down the road. We can imagine adding like an audit committee as well. As far as our knowledge committees, these can be opened by any of our members. These are also ran by volunteers or member volunteers. This is the adolescent health. It's actually ran by Kyle here on the call. The building and design committee and park advocacy. We have our standing committees. These are voted on by our board to be basically like our static committees. We have the athlete advisory, certification, competition, culture, culture and heritage, and then a judges committee. So y'all have any extra time or have some expertise? We're always looking for some additional help. Well, I guess this is a good time for us to open the floor for questions. I guess I'll stop the screen share and we'll kind of go from there. Blake, what would be the best way for us to handle opening the floor? I'm very unfamiliar with Zoom.
So the best thing, if people want to raise their hands, if they have a question, we can unmute you and have that. We also have a bunch of questions that people submitted in the survey that went out. And so we can start with those as well. But if people have questions about things, things that came up that we just presented on, probably now is a good time, and then we can get to the packaged questions after that. Kyle?
Yeah, um, I had, I'd taken a, in my community, in my committee meeting a week or two ago, I heard from someone who was wondering about how to get his parkour community on that community map you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, so that map is currently being developed. If you actually want to have him, shoot me an email, alan@uspk.org. I can be in touch in the next week or two.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Kyle.
Nissa?
So, hi, I submitted a question, so I'm sure this is on your list of things, but I thought maybe it would just be better if I explained. So myself, I'm pretty new to parkour. I've only been training for maybe two years now. It was something I started in the pandemic and myself, I've always been outside and never been attached to a gym. I love gyms, you know, there's a gym in my area that I'm planning to go to more, frankly, but I've just been outside most of the time. So the insurance here, this was a real kind of surprise to me. I'm just like, so I didn't, I guess it was called Spot Insurance, the individual coverage. I guess I'm just interested in knowing more there. Like, how did you develop this? Have, you know, there are many outdoor meetups across the nation, I think. And that's been basically how I've been practicing. For instance, if I post a Facebook event and say, hey, a group of us are going to be here at this time, am I going to be incurring liability? And I've heard varying answers from people as I've been traveling around and been in different communities. I've heard different responses. So I'm just really curious about this service or this, the insurance being offered. Is it, is that kind of what Spot Insurance is addressing? And are you getting a lot of take-up on this product? And what are your thoughts so far? Sorry if that was a lot of talking, but yeah.
No, that's super helpful. And those are all really useful questions. I can tackle two of those. So the first one is Um, so the first one is the SPOT Insurance is an individual insurance. So that's for you if you are out training on your own. Um, and you get hurt, and that's basically meant to be supplemental to whatever health insurance you have. Um, and that, that will cover you as an individual. It is not covering the liability that you may have towards other individuals. Um, and so if you're having a meetup and you're just meeting up with friends. That's something that, that not really any sure insurance besides health insurance is gonna cover. Um, as long as you are not saying that you are instructing them and you're not taking payment. So the key things there is if, if you are operating as an entity and saying, hey. Uh, I'm a coach and I'm gonna coach this session, therefore then you're taking liability on. Um, and that's where what we're, the next insurance project that we're working on is the general liability. Um. And actually, our, our recommendations would be that you do that. Uh, through an organization and that you have general liability insurance and that you have a coaching certification. All of those, uh, you, it, we live in the US, so you probably want to have people sign a waiver. All of those things are, are meant to kind of. Protect you, your assets and the other people that are in the, in the sessions that you're running. But if you're just running meetups or training with friends, the whole reason that we got SPOT was so that parkour athletes who often happen to be. Underinsured or not at all insured, um, have some protection when they're out training and um. It's just like when you go to a ski resort or uh and you sign up for the insurance, uh or you do any other high-risk activity that. They offer you insurance. Uh, parkour now has this, even though it is less of a high-risk insurance activity than some of the others that do offer it. We realize that this is something that the community really needs, um, especially as competitions are becoming. A big thing and, and I don't know about you, you've been training now, it sounds like for a few years. I'm sure you've probably encountered some uh, some parkour. Battle scars, uh, so having that extra protection and that extra peace of mind is really helpful. But those are two very different things. Hopefully, I answered. Most of the question?
If I just, uh, so if I understand correctly, if, and I'm not accepting, so if I'm not accepting payment and I'm not coaching, the general uh. Wisdom has been, I don't necessarily need general liability, but if either of those two things, I need general liability and I need to be attached to an organization.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you, you would want to, you could make yourself the organization. You can create your own company, um, and we have lots of experience. Within the community here to help you do that. Um, and that's where we would probably indicate one of the certifications or the kind of the pathways for that. But I would say that, yes, as long as you're not taking payment and you're not. Presenting yourself as, as in charge, then you're not, it's just a group of people jumping on stuff. You may have pushback from the property owners. Um, or the city who may not like that. Um, and that's the other side of things, which is kind of public advocacy, which is. Where another big piece of, of what we're trying to do is, is presenting parkour to. The municipalities that you may be training in and, and you're training on public space and, and they don't realize that you're not jumping between rooftops and. And doing really high-risk stuff. You're, you're just outdoors, doing a fitness activity. So that's the other piece.
Thanks very much. That was very helpful.
Awesome. Uh, Adam is next.
Yeah, the similar type of question as Nissa, but about the event insurance. Um, I wanted to get a little bit of clarity for myself and of course everyone else here. Uh, what exactly event insurance does or does not cover under SPOT? Uh, because I know people want to host events and they might think that's the right kind of insurance just based on the name. So could someone provide a little bit of. Clarity on that, um, just so we know for sure.
Yeah, I can take this one. Um, so the event insurance is. Event participant insurance. So it's not general liability insurance for events. What it does is basically take the higher-tier individual insurance that we have. And that is applied to all participants of your event. Uh, the way that's done is essentially a per-head cost. That can be built into the ticket price, and then all of those participants at your event are covered for those specific days of the event. Uh, in order to do that, you need to set up with us ahead. Uh, you need to be a member. The organization running the event needs to be a member. Set up with us ahead and we will. Collect all of the information that we need and send that over to SPOT, who will then reach out to the event participants. Um, so again, that's individual accident coverage for the participants of your event, not general liability for the event itself.
So in a way, SPOT is like. An extension of people's health insurance in different formats is maybe a way to think about it.
Yeah, that's a great way to think about it.
John.
Yeah, um, as a follow-up then from that, what do you feeling like the timeframe or process needs to look like? For a group to put on, say they want to put on an event and then. Getting essentially that insurance approved. Uh, are we thinking like it's a couple of weeks? Is it a, a month or two? Um. What kind of the, what's the ideal, uh, uh, I guess timeframe that you're looking for that?
So for the event insurance, um. There's, uh, I guess I should say. Are you asking about how long in advance you need to know the participants in order to have that set up? Or are you asking about how much lead time we need to set that up with you?
The second one, yeah.
Okay, um, it doesn't necessarily require a ton of lead time. We do need to make sure is there's enough lead time when you announce your event. Uh, there are specific, basically data and information that we need to submit to our insurer. Um, so we need to make sure that you're collecting that information and we have that for all of the participants of your event. So like a month would be great. Uh, if you want to talk more about that, and if you have a specific event coming up, uh, you can reach out to me. Melissa at USPK.org. Um, and I can kind of start working on that and get you set up with that.
Cool, thank you.
No problem.
All right, if people don't have questions that they immediate burning questions right now, we can go to the questions that we got pre-submitted. And Alan, if you want to read them off and, and then we can put them in the chat too probably, so people can see it, and then we'll tackle them one by one.
Yeah, first question is, how is membership growing? What's your vision for continued growth? Um, alongside what is driving that membership?
We have Garrett here, who's probably the best person to talk about membership growth. Um.
Yeah, happy to jump in and sorry I'm not on video tonight. I'm on, I'm in transit at the moment, but. Uh, and things are going really well, so um we are, um slowly but surely, we have a steady increase on organizational membership, which is where we had a bit of a pause. Um, for the last couple of months previously, um, and then the biggest push that we uh need over the next couple of months here, both individual and organizational is just. Word of mouth, spreading the word amongst practitioners and amongst organizational leaders that we have this membership available and all that comes with it. So, um, I'm taking any opportunity I can to get in front of a group of practitioners, a group of gym owners or leaders. Um, so if you are a, uh, active in a parkour community. And you're like, hey, I want all of us to cover our asses and make sure we uh don't have. Uh, tons and tons of medical debt if we get into a, an injury. I'm doing parkour. Definitely hit me up. I will drop my email and cellphone in the chat too. Um, so that we can help grow both individual and organizational membership.
Thanks, Garrett. Uh, second question is, how do you interact with informal outdoor meetup organizations? What's the Texas, do you collect or want to collect from them? And how do you keep it safe and inclusive?
I can take that if that's, um, so I, I'd say at this point, um, there are, we've got organizational members. Um, that are usually businesses, and so they're kind of, they're taking payment in some way or, or they're record, they're um. Incorporated in some way. Um, we would love to have a way to get people to join as. Organizational members for informal groups, but I think at this point, the focus is really on, on individual members. And organizational members. So if you represent an informal group, the best thing to do is, is to have those individuals. Join as members. That way you get the benefits of the coverage, uh, of the uh SPOT and cart, the coverage. You also have representation, and I think a lot of these informal groups are, are made up of people that are training on their own and interacting with. Different groups, and one of the beauties of parkour is that people tend to train with lots of different groups and, and cross-pollinate, and that's what we want to see happening. So. Um, our, our current recommendation is that you join as individual members.
Thanks, Blake. Our next question is, what are you doing to improve messaging to the community? So we know what your priorities are, what you're working on, and how we can help. I think I can kind of tackle this one. Um, I think to be honest. We do, eh, as a board, we do so many, like, we have meetings all the time, uh, week to week, and um. I think one of our biggest struggles is actually learning how to communicate effectively uh to such a large community, whether that's through social media. Uh, like Facebook or Instagram. Um, having one-on-one conversations as, as Garrett was saying, and uh sitting down with different organizational leaders, media leaders. Um, and also strategizing around uh new social platforms or communication platforms like Discord. Uh, currently, we've been working on trying to have uh. More exposure through social, uh particularly Instagram and, and Facebook. Um, we've been having conversations on Parkour Earth's Discord. Um, currently, we are debating on whether or not we should have our own Discord and uh similarly it's like an online forum. That's like the old parkour.net or American parkour forums back in the day. Um, I think we're in a, a different time where we have to kind of. Transition into like the different technologies, um, or applications. Um, but also more importantly is having town halls like this, um, is a, a really great way for us to have the board. Uh, connect with many community members as well.
I think another big strategy that we've used thus far has also been kind of a trickle-down format where. Kind of organizational members are, are getting messaging from us and, and are hopefully distributing that to their networks, but. We realize that that's not the best way and, and because parkour is such a multi-generational sport. Uh, we realize that part of the genera- generation doesn't even know what Facebook is. Part of it only interacts over on TikTok, part of it interacts on. Other platforms and, and so we have to kind of embrace that and, and be on everything at once. Um. We've expanded the board significantly in the last year plus, um, as a way to try to make that happen. Um, and we've heard loud and clear that you haven't heard very much from us, so we're trying to make that better.
And I think one of the next steps that we're taking is potentially hiring a marketing director. Um, so be on the lookout for a. Or if y'all happen to know anyone, um, feel free to forward their information to us. Um, but also look out for a job posting, um. On the national job posting board uh in the next coming weeks or months. Our next question is, what is the collective vision of the growth of parkour as a sport going forward? This is a big one. Um.
I mean, I can tackle it from competition side.
Yeah.
Uh, from competition side, I see it growing as so that. We've got the two branches sort of, of, you know, most people who do parkour probably won't do competition. Um. I compare it to like rock climbing or skiing. Um, huge, huge sports with lots of people who participate who aren't competitive. Um, from the competition side, though, likewise, I would love to see it growing like those other sports. Where for kids or adults who want that and need that to help them. Focus their training or give them something they're working towards to help them learn discipline. Um, that we were growing out leagues where they are building up communities within their local community, but then the larger. Parkour community, we all have a sense now as to how small the world is thanks to all those uh. Social media things that we were just talking about, and. That's been the beauty is, I think, every person on here has probably had that experience of being at a parkour event and meeting somebody else, but still feeling connected to them, even if you don't live near each other because. You're connected through social media, and so I do see us. Continuing to grow, continuing to grow the competition where we're, that just keeps building and feeding community, keeping kids probably involved longer, um. As it gives some direction and focus and gives, uh. You know, the gym something to help their kids work towards, so it's keeping them engaged. Um, so I see the future growing with that, figuring out exactly what we want. Competition to look like as a sport. Um. But again, maintaining that big chunk of the community that's maybe not actually competing. So.
And I, I can jump in kind of representing that, that side since that's definitely been something I've been advocating. For since I was, helped to start the, help start everything back now five years ago. Um, I think that's, that's huge, and, and I think. Everybody that came together to create USPK. Has the vision of maintaining the culture, the philosophy, the spirit, and the thing that we all value so much about it. And that's. Part of the reason of, of bringing people together through competition, but also bringing the various events. Together and having a, a shared events calendar, having a recognition of our common values through certifications. Um, having general advocacy through kind of public advocacy from, from a kind of public work standpoint, but also a community standpoint. Of, of really finding other ways to bring people together that it, that's not just centered around competition. But also creating the spaces at the competition. Venues, the competition events where there's a non-competitive side of things, um, because we realize it. That things that are made by the community for the community are always going to have much more of. Spirit than something that's imposed on us from non-parkour organizations.
Next question is, what is USPK working on that will help support small businesses in the parkour industry?
I know we talked about insurance and, and I, I'm leading part of that, so that's very much at the front of my mind. Um. Insurance has been a, a struggle in, in kind of the US. Since it came here, um, in the early two thousands, and, and I think it's, it's dictated a lot of the way that parkour has grown here in the US and. And there's a reason we have gyms. There's a reason we have. Uh, a predominance of, of gyms is that in the old days and to this day, it's, it's hard to get insurance that will cover. Just training outside in public spaces. Um, unlike in a lot of other parts of the world, um, we have a culture that. That is very litigious and, and therefore having good insurance is, is key to running a parkour business or creating an organization or even. Taking the responsibility of stepping up and saying, hey, we're gonna lead a session. Um, I'm gonna teach people how to do these things, even though there's no financial gain for me. The moment you take on that liability, you risk a lot. Um, and so having access to high-quality insurance that covers the things that we needed to cover. Um, has been really difficult, and right now, the industry is pretty fract- fractured and, and the advantage has always been in the hands of the insurance. Um, industry and we're, we're trying to change that. So that's, that's probably the biggest thing that we're doing. The other big thing that we're doing is trying to have some clarity for. The small business owners that, that run parkour organizations about what does it mean to have a parkour coach? Like, are they trained? Do they have any sort of background? Have they been? First aid qualified? Are they background checked? A lot of the things that most other organizations in the US, if you look at. Um, any other sporting industry, um, they require coaches to be background checked. That's. Good practice here in the US, but that's not required by any means, and, and I think we, a lot of organizations are at risk because that's not happening. So having general guidelines for good practice, saw a lot of information coming out from us during COVID, uh, about best practices. Um, that was a time of crisis. We're hoping to have additional information coming, um. For, for organizations to. best practices for build standards, for equipment standards. Those things take time. Um, and the other thing that we need is we need more volunteers that have expertise in those things. So if you have expertise in in building equipment, if you have expertise in in building facilities, this is your time to step up. Um, so we're we're a small group of people trying to make this happen. And and right now, the priorities that we've heard of have been certifications, insurance um and bringing people together. But there's, we've got a long list of things on our to-do list.
We have a couple more questions left. Second to last will be how to bring more diversity to parkour? Or what is USPK primarily focusing on in the realm of inclusion, uh gender, age, race, diversity, et cetera?
Can jump in, I think one of the things and um no, maybe you can talk about this more, but for the comps that we are sanctioning having equal prize money between men and women. I know that's been a really important thing to make sure that um like they're on equal footing. It's not like the women's event is a junior event or an add-on thing or something that's primarily a male competition, but having them be equally competitive spaces and respect for the competitors and really grow that from from both sides and to actually have like actual equality between the genders and yeah, not not dominating on one side.
Yeah, in terms of competition, I would say that making sure that um everyone in competition is treated equally um and honored equally and challenged. Um, so I would say that's what we're doing there as far as um outreach with it right now. Um, that'll probably come as we get some of the other big blocks in of actually hosting events. And so have more capacity for outreach and stuff like that. But yeah, thanks for, it's so funny, that one seems so obvious to me, I didn't even think to say. Thank you, Mike.
It should be obvious, but for we're not there yet.
Unfortunately, Corey isn't here uh tonight because they've been doing a ton of work uh for the trans inclusion policy that that just came out. Um, and also hosting things like the Obsidian gather gathering. Those are the types of events that a lot of times need need support, but but don't necessarily have the the financial backing that don't have the infrastructure to be able to continue on in the long term. And and we kind of saw it as as our role at USPK to to take on that responsibility. Um, that being said, we we want to host, we want to be able to help with other events, we want to be able to help with other initiatives. And so I think there's there's a lot of interest in trying to make parkour reflect the diversity of of our country um and and of our community. So if you have ways that you think that we can do better or events that you want to support or initiatives that you think we should be doing, this is this is your opportunity to bring them to us.
Interesting to add to that um around both Obsidian Gathering and the the Women's Park Movement Gathering. Um, the Women's Move Park Movement Gathering was a an event that's been happening generally since 2010, 2011. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, um but we were able to support this year with some exposure and uh so I believe some event insurance um with the leadership of Adrian um Terrier Man uh down in Greenville, South Carolina. And then Obsidian Gathering was a project developed by David Ivey in and co-hosted with uh Marquis Johnson, Colorado. Um, this was around discussions for parkour and police, parkour and diversity or race or also intersectional diversity, inclusion, including like LGBTQ, women and no diversity as well. Also, a lot of work that we've been doing through uh inclusion and diversity here at USPK. Um, yeah, and always hoping to having more conversations around that. Our last question is, I missed the parkour parks meeting, is that still a thing and how can I participate?
Uh, yes, there it is still a thing, it happens every month. We'll put, we'll do a better job of putting the information and the invitation out on social media. Um, but that is something you could just show up, um join the conversation. Usually Corey and or I are there. Uh, we've had interesting discussions last two two times of of people that are are kind of just starting things out and and want to know kind of the pathway. Um, but one of the goals is to to create a common uh outlet and resource for people to go to when they're trying to get parks approved or or park projects started. Um, because it can be a pretty daunting process and and time-consuming process and we want to help help that along.
Thanks, Blake. Um, I guess before we close off, is there any other questionable questions before we finalize and close up the meeting or town hall today?
I was just wondering how um competitions are gonna work like for qualifiers going up to nationals and stuff and also like age groups, like do you have to participate in your own age group and stuff?
So as far as the competitions and advancing to nationals, you have to compete in the adult category to go to nationals. Um, but we are not enforcing the sixteen and oh, well, no, we said, I think, see, I should have been prepared for this one. Um, I believe we said fifteen and over to go to nationals, but you have to have competed as an adult through the season. So you can't have competed in the youth level comps in your region and then proceed to nationals. And we're looking at the top podium qualifiers in each category and um division. And the same, it's similar to the uh trans policy where you, once you start the season, whatever um category you've kind of said that you're gonna be in, that's what you compete in for the season and work up towards um regionals and nationals.
Megan, with any other um areas that we could clarify around competitions? Um, I know that we just did many large announcements and some of the information is still being pipelined for uh being communicated to athletes. Thanks, Megan. Awesome. Well, that concludes uh today's town hall. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone for taking your time, especially on a Saturday weeknight um or weekend um to join us and and hearing about the updates and exciting news uh here at USPK. Um, we'll be reaching out shortly with an email on some follow-ups around how to become a member, um be being able to volunteer and some of the committees um and potentially answering any additional questions that we might get on the on the backend of this. Um, so thank you.
Cool.
You did a
Stop recording.
Yeah.